Hello, my name is Jill Calley and I am the Chairperson of the Oldbridge PTA Presidents Council. Today we will be conducting interviews of the candidates running for a seat on the Board of Education. There are six candidates running for three seats, each for a three-year term. I will be asking each of the candidates a series of questions so you may get to know them better. This information is meant to help you make an informed decision on Election Day, Tuesday, November 4th. You will be seeing the candidates in ballot order. We're here with Donna Andriani and she is number one on the ballot.
Yes, I am. Hi.
Hi, thank you for coming. How long have you lived in Oldbridge and do you have any children that are attending or have attended Oldbridge Public Schools?
I've lived in Oldbridge approximately eighteen years. And I have one son that went to school at Charah, at SOC, and high school. He's now a senior at West Virginia University.
What motivated you to run for the Board of Education and what in your background qualifies you for the position?
Well, those questions are very intertwined for me in terms of answering. There was a little blip in the road when my son went from SOC to the high school. We didn't have the right bus schedule, there was a problem with his course schedule. I went to the high school PTA, found out that was not the place to go. So I went to a Board of Ed meeting to voice my concerns. And I got hooked while I was there, listening to what the banter back and forth and the people. I started to go to the meetings. And I figured if no one else is going to watch my money taxpayer-wise, I will be there. I didn't see too many teachers in the audience, I am a retired teacher. So when they were asking questions, some of the answers that came back were not easy for the people in the audience to understand. So I felt that as an educator, I would have a way to communicate with the people on the board who are not necessarily educators, with the audience and the people in the public. So that was a main reason for me to run. And I've been, this is now my sixth year.
Okay. What do you see as the function of the Board of Education and where do you feel that you have the greatest impact?
Again, as an educator, I believe that I have very good communication skills. I may not know what a roof is supposed to look like or what the going rate is for computer paper, but I do understand new math systems, I do understand prices of textbooks, I do understand all the nuances of creating new courses, new programs, getting the most value out of the tax dollar for the way in which we deliver education and deliver instruction. And I think that's very important. The other part to that question is the fact that I am a little stung, a little conformed here. I am a big believer in a community system. And I volunteer for a lot of different things. The community is only strong as the members in it. We need the parents to come out, we need all the advocates for the individual programs. And it all fits into a big picture. People worry about their property values. Great schools raise property values. Great schools bring people in, new people, new children, new teachers. People want to live here. When we first went looking for a house, we moved out, we came to this area and we went through Oldbridge and went, "Oh my God, these people are, they're committed to their recreation soccer and they're committed to their band and they're committed..." It was just a great place to raise a child. And I want to give back.
As you know, this is a very big commitment with many meetings each month. If re-elected, how much time are you able to devote to the many issues facing our school district?
I recently retired, so I have a little more time than I did before. I think that people don't realize the time commitment that is necessary to do the job correctly. You have not only the agenda meetings, not only the Board of Ed televised meetings, but you have committee meetings and we have, depends on the year, anywhere from eight to ten or eleven different committees. We have ad hoc committees, we have events, whether it's a football game, whether it's a play at an elementary school or a gym show. Board of Education members like to go to visit that, those events. I have more time, I do a lot, I go to many of them. And I think I have plenty of time to do that. But I have to say that I didn't finish my other question. You asked me about the function of the Board and I didn't get that far, so I apologize. The function of the Board is not to manage the school district. We pay very qualified people to do that. Those are your central administrators, starting with the superintendent, assistant superintendents, your directors and your district supervisors and program directors. What we do have however, is a Board that is the approval system. They are members of the community that sit and set goals and try to steer the finances and moving progressively academically to complete those goals with fiscal responsibility. That's the job of the Board of Education.
Okay, thank you. What do you see as the most important issue facing Oldbridge Education right now?
I believe that testing is a very big issue. It's not even whether or not the children are up to the challenge, it's not even about the scores. It's about the constant testing. Many, many people believe that you have to create a percentile and a norm so that you can rate and compare one school system to another school system, one child to another child. We have the park, we have new Common Core, we have state mandates, all of which, when they are presented to us and given a date to be implemented, as a Board and as a school district, we don't have a choice. So with the new park testing, for instance, we were told by this amount of time, we have to do this, you have to have computers. And the state did not give us any money, they just told us we had to do it. So we had to change where we were putting our money and take it from Peter to Paul because we had had it targeted for one thing and all of a sudden now we needed to make sure that over a year or two we were able to have all the computers, all the software, all the servers, all of that stuff that we need. So I believe that's one of the biggest challenges. You're going to have people that say academic progress is the biggest challenge. Everybody wants their children to grow and be successful as adults. That's our mission, but maybe not our biggest challenge.
Okay. While there's always room for improvement, these elections often focus on negative. Please tell me something positive that's happening in Oldbridge Public Schools.
Oh my God, there's so many good things. Starting with education, we have more AP courses that have been added. For those people who don't know, those are Advanced Placement classes. So we have many now, I believe we're up to twelve or thirteen. We also have middle college courses. So the children who take those can wind up with college credits from Fairleigh Dickinson. I believe we have six of those. But going back to the AP classes, we have more offerings, we have more students taking them, we have more students that are getting a better grade on them. So now they have college credits before they even get to college. And we actually have been cited by ETS, which is the parent company for the College Board, on our accomplishments for that. So that's great. We have received national and state recognition for schools of character. So that's intrinsic, that's not even academic, that's great. We have the Department of Agriculture, United States Department of Agriculture, giving us awards for national recognitions for nutrition programs. It's amazing the amount of academic, social, athletic, performing arts. Even our automotive class has won awards. They won a big grant to rehab some of the materials and some of the equipment in the auto shop. We have great stuff going on here.
Great. Okay, last question, do you think that we're up to date with technology? And if not, what are your suggestions to get us there?
When I first started to come to the Board meetings, I thought we were very far behind. I'm going back eight or nine years. We might have had one computer, two computers, few in the library, very few in the classrooms, and if so, maybe one. Over the last five or six years, we have made a tremendous push towards technology. We went from, I think the last numbers were almost $100,000 on computer, printer and paper. It's amazing. The number of computers, laptops, desktops, printers have all exploded. Part of that is because of the park, the testing that we have that's mandated from the state that every child, we need to have a computer, not that every child has one. I believe that we wind up buying computers and then we don't have the wiring and the network capabilities to keep up with everything that we have. So a lot of money that's spent in this district for computers is not on something that you're going to see. It's in the walls, it's in the wiring, it's in the Wi-Fi, it's in the satellites, it's in whatever it is that's in the roof that gets the signal from one place to another. So if you would have asked me that question seven years ago, I would have said absolutely we are very far behind. If you ask me today, I'm going to say that we have poured a lot of money into that area and we are really very close to the cutting edge of the materials that we need.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Again, this is Donna Andriani and she's number one on the ballot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
We are here with Kelly Ellis Foster and she is number two on your ballot. Hi Kelly.
Hi Jill.
Thank you for coming. How long have you lived in Oldbridge and do you have any children that are attending or have attended Oldbridge Public Schools?
I've lived in Oldbridge, it'll be sixteen years in December. I, my son graduated in 2012 through the whole system. And my daughter is now a sophomore at the high school.
What motivated you to run for the Board of Education and what in your background qualifies you for this position?
Well, I think probably every candidate has the same kind of passion and is doing this because they think they can make a difference. And I think that's it. I think I can bring some new perspectives to the Board. I think I can help with some of the direction the Board's going in the district. I think we've been making some great strides and I think I can help with that. I think my background, my background in work, I've been with Honeywell and I've done major projects and project management and human resources. And a lot of the skills I've learned and I apply to work, I think I can apply to the district in helping find solutions on some of the problems that we're having, but also keep going the great things that we have going now.
Okay. What do you see as the function of the Board of Education and where do you feel you would have the greatest impact?
Sure, so the Board of Ed, you know, is really kind of an advisory. Their goal, their purpose is to take feedback and what the community is looking for, you know, the parents, the taxpayers, the students. What is it that they need from the district and be their voice in that, help set policy, help shape some of the direction. And I think I'm good at that because I do understand some of the big strategic things when you need to look at what's going on. But as well as I think I'm pretty approachable. And if Board members need to be that conduit to the district, you need somebody who's approachable, who you can talk to, who can understand. I certainly can understand the role of a parent, having been, having been a parent. So I know the challenges we all have as parents and what we look for out of our education, as well as the financial responsibility that the Board has to the taxpayers. So I think I can kind of balance those two.
Okay. This is a very big commitment with many meetings each month. If elected, how much time are you able to devote to the many issues facing our district?
So I think I'm acutely aware of the hours. I know, actually many of the existing Board members and I know the amount of time that it takes. And I am certainly up for that challenge. I understand that there's weekly meetings, sometimes more than a week. I think it's important to go to the various school functions to be in touch with what's going on out there, whether it's the various PTA meetings, whether it's the school functions, just showing up to not only talk, to find issues, but share in some of the exciting stuff that happens. So I think I understand the commitment and I'm absolutely up to doing it.
What do you see as the most important issue facing Oldbridge Education right now?
So I just get one?
The most important.
The most important, I think, is to continue the focus on the education. I know recently, I think it was just last Friday, the new SAT scores came out and the schools, districts improved. But I think continually to focus on not only the SAT level, but starting down at kindergarten and all the various mandates that the school has to meet because of the state and other regulations, that that focus on improving the academics for all levels, you know, so those high achievers, how do we have those good enrichment programs for our gifted and talented, as well as those who struggle, might need a little help in the education and our special needs. So I think the main focus is on continually to improve that education for the students.
Okay. While there is always room for improvement, these elections often focus on negative. Please discuss something positive that's happening in Oldbridge Public Schools.
Well, I think there's just a number of amazing things. So the SAT scores is certainly one. I think when you look at, if anybody's around on a Friday night at the football field, the great community that happens there with the students and the administration. And I have to say, whenever I'm around the students, they're very respectful, they're full of energy. So I think we see that throughout. We have a number, I think it's eight, schools of character, amazing. And I think the new thing this year is the full day kindergarten where we see almost double enrollment. So that meeting, huge need that the public had. So I think, I think there's absolutely more positives going on in the school district than negatives.
Okay. And the last question, do you think we're up to date with technology? And if not, what are your suggestions to bring us up to date?
I think we're starting to. I don't think we're there yet, but I think that's clear. I know there's a three-year strategic plan on technology. I think the addition of putting in the laptops or iPads are great because that's how kids learn now. I mean, they're used to them from the time they're less than one years old, so we need to do that. That's how kids learn now, different than the way we did. I know instead of using standard desktops, using laptops, they're cheaper, they're more portable, we need to do that. I think too, figuring out how do kids use technology that's more how they operate. So an example of, I know cell phones aren't allowed in school, but sometimes a student taking their phone, taking a picture of their homework assignment is faster and it's more effective for the way that they learn than sitting there and writing it down and maybe missing something. So it doesn't take away from the teacher talking, you can do it. So I think we need to be open to looking how to use all kinds of technology more effectively. And I think there's certainly some plans, but I think technology is the key to improving not only education, but also helps streamline a lot of the administrative work that goes on. So a way to try to maybe improve the backend, kind of back office stuff using technology. So I think there's certainly areas to continue to improve in that.
Okay, thank you. This is Kelly Ellis Foster and she is number two on your ballot. Thank you, Kelly. This is Richard Dunn and he is number three on your ballot. Welcome, Richard.
Thank you Jill, thank you for having me.
How long have you lived in Oldbridge and do you have any children that are attending or have attended Oldbridge Public Schools?
Well, I've lived in Oldbridge for sixteen years. I moved over from Staten Island. And currently I have a daughter who's a sophomore at the high school. She's a special needs student. And I currently have also a ten-year-old, Reagan, and he's in Charah Elementary School.
Okay. What motivated you to run for the Board of Education and what in your background qualifies you for this position?
I've been engaged in education my entire life. I went to school to be a high school history teacher. And I did teach for a very short period of time because I felt teaching was a very admirable position. From there, my wife is an educator as well. And as we moved to Oldbridge, I found this community to be a very good wholesome community. And I felt that it was important for me to volunteer back to the community. As I do as a firefighter at South Oldbridge, I felt I wanted to do something with education since I did go to school to be an educator. The educational system here in Oldbridge is getting better. It's to a point right now where I am very proud of this system. And I am very volunteer-minded. I spend a lot of time between the Board of Education right now with the time that's involved and also being a firefighter, volunteering is a big part of my life.
Okay. What do you see as the function of the Board of Education and where do you feel that you have the greatest impact?
The Board of Education is an organization that's out for the benefit of the children. We are in the business of educating. And there is a lot of discussion about, "Oh well, you know, we are taxed too much." And quite frankly, based upon our assisted districts in Middlesex County, our tax levy is far less. So my goal as a Board of Education member and the reason why I am very fond of the system is because I want to give the children the finest education, I want to give them the greatest experience. And it's a sensible approach which we've taken on the Board of Ed. And as you can see over the last four years, we've made incredible strides in our educational enrichment. From whether it was implementing a full day kindergarten, rights were improved, SAT scores, where our high schools getting ranked higher over the last three, four years than it did back in 2008. So we've made incredible strides and I want to continue that. And I think that we can be a successful district just like East Brunswick is.
Okay. This is a very big commitment, which you know, with many meetings each month. And if re-elected, how much time are you able to devote to the many issues facing our school district?
There are many issues facing our school district and I've made this pledge back four years ago when I ran. Yes, I'm a firefighter, I spend at least twenty hours a week firefighting and doing what's best for the community. But I've also been a very proactive Board member here at the Board of Ed and I understand what it takes and I understand the time commitment. And my family is 100% behind me to ensure that I'm here fighting for what's right for our children and for our district. Quite frankly, this is not my hobby, firefighting is like my hobby, but this also is something that I'm very fond of, so I dedicate myself as much as I can. I don't go out with my friends. My hobby and my life is my family, my profession, the school district, and also protecting the community through the fire department.
What do you see as the most important issue facing Oldbridge Education right now?
Well, there's a few concerns that are still out there that we need to work on. I'm looking for another three years to finish what we started. The last four years, we've made tremendous progress. I want to continue that progress. We got a tremendous amount of technology in the schools, I think that we can take it another step. We have enhanced our security measures here in the district and I think we can still improve upon that. And quite frankly, there is much more to do with education. We want to change our reading program. We have a new math program now in the middle schools and it's going to be moving to the high school. Math in Focus is a fabulous program, it's paid dividends. And there are much more endeavors that we want to take on as a Board. And I'm hoping to get another three years so we can fight for what's right for our children and for this district educationally.
Okay. While there's always room for improvement, these elections often focus on negative. Please discuss something positive that's happening in Oldbridge Public Schools.
Great question, Jill. I believe in my opinion that the school system as a whole is doing wonderful. From our educational enrichment, our test scores are improving, New Jersey ASG scores are improving. We're going to be starting the park exam very soon. We're doing well. There's always room for improvement, of course, and that's the goal, is to give the finest education possible. One thing that, you know, I'm very proud of is, yes, we've made tremendous strides in the educational enrichment. And that's the paramount goal, is to make sure we have quality educated children coming out of the community. That's the community's responsibility and that's what we're going to continue to do. But with our sports programs over the last four years, they've increased tremendously. Our performing arts has done so well. So it's just on education, it's the whole package that Oldbridge brings. And that's from the educational enrichment, rights for athletics and the performing arts. And there are, there is much more to do, but we're going in the right direction. And I want to be part of the next three years so I can ensure and be the steward of the educational process here in Oldbridge.
Last question. Do you think we are up to date with technology and if not, what are your suggestions to bring us up to date?
The Board of Education made a commitment three years ago to bring technology into the classrooms. We put a plan in place to bring the iPads into the classroom, which has been a huge success. With kindergarten coming onboard, every kindergarten class has iPads. And technology is the way of the future. And we need to make a larger investment in this process. We've changed our switches, we changed our technology within the schools, we've increased our whiteboards, our smartboards, but there's still room to grow in technology. We want to be able to connect everyone digitally through their iPads, with their teacher's iPad. And that's coming in the very near future, but we need more onus, we need more sacrifice and more time as a Board of Education and administration to get there. Technology is the way of the future and the Board of Education has been working tirelessly to get this very important aspect and resource into the classroom.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, this is Richard Dunn and he is number three on your ballot.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Jill.
We're here with Frank Weber and he is ballot position number four. Hi, Mr. Weber.
Hello, thanks for holding this forum, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. How long have you lived in Oldbridge and do you have any children that are attending or have attended Oldbridge Public Schools?
I've lived here since 1974. My four children have graduated from the Oldbridge system. And my grandson completed Cheesequake School as well before he moved to Vermont.
Okay. What motivated you to run for the Board of Education and what in your background qualifies you for this position?
I'm running for the Board again. I first served in 1993 and I got involved in 1986 because when I brought my children into the system at a parochial school, I felt there were some inequities within the schools and some things that I thought, as a parent committee member, I could make better, but I found that I was more successful being a Board member and that's why I initially ran and continue to serve.
Okay. What do you see as the function of the Board of Education and where do you feel that you have the greatest impact and why?
Well, the theoretical function is that the Board makes policy. The practical reality is that the Board tries to, from the community standpoint, oversee, to see that the district is well-administered. And that would include the educational level and all of the things that are associated with providing that, including the physical plant, the buildings and all of those kind of things. And I feel that's where I've brought my strongest set of skills. I have an extensive business background and plant manufacturing background. So a lot of the processes that are similar to what the Board would go through, for example, in the referendum or in the adding of additional space are things that are all familiar to me in my professional life.
Okay. As you know, this is a very big commitment with many meetings each month. If re-elected, how much time are you able to devote to the many issues facing our school district?
Well, we're a committee of nine that runs on a committee of the whole system, which essentially means that the functions of the committees are broken down and assigned to individual smaller groups. That allows us to, in my opinion, Board members to use whatever particular level of expertise, if they come out of the education background to say, for example, work on curriculum. I think with that committee system, I'm more than able to devote a high level of time attending obviously the regular and the agenda meetings and those committee meetings that I would be on. And some committee of the whole meetings that I might not be on but are of a major interest, such as finance and long-range planning, those kind of things.
What do you see as the most important issue facing Oldbridge Education right now?
I think in many cases, this recent Boards, and I won't entirely lay it off on the Board, have been, kind of lost their way. In terms that we have had serious decreasing enrollment and it's going to continue, not quite at the same pace as it has in the last ten years, but it will continue. A recent demographic study showed that. That we've spent an awful lot of money, overspent on some projects to the tune of maybe $3 million cumulatively over the last three years that I think could have been better applied toward the educational process or improving our facilities. We're in a district that is... process or improving our facilities. We're in a district that is loaded with buildings which were built in the 1950s and 60s, and are all going to come to the end of their life expectancy at the same time. And I think that the district has to get a better handle on their finances so that they can be prepared for that change, and rather than go out to the taxpayers 15 years from now and want seven or eight new schools.
Okay. While there is always room for improvement, these elections often focus on negative. Please discuss something positive that's happening in Olbridge public schools.
Well, what's positive, I think, and I'm not going to say it's necessarily totally school-related, is when the election got moved from April to November, the last April election, we had 3,500 people, which is 9% of the population who are registered. There's 40,000. And 8,000 voters came out during that. So at least we're getting more people participating in the process. And I think, I'm hopeful, and I continue to remain hopeful, that the larger participation will really dictate the kind of things that need to be done in the district. Again, we've got shrinking enrollment, yet increasing taxes. And I think that we need to find a way to improve those things. As far as positives, test scores, I saw the recent SAT test scores from Superintendent Cittadino, and they were encouraging that they're up. We've moved up significantly. I haven't seen all of the other test scores from other districts like us, but it certainly is an improvement, and that's to be encouraged.
Do you think that we're up to date with technology? And if not, what are your suggestions to bring us up to date?
Well, the question is, we went out for $1.5 million for the iPads, plus we've spent prior to that $250,000, and we've spent additional funds since then. So we're probably already over $2 million. The things that I've heard is that the iPads have not been the success that people were hoping they would be, and there are continuing technology problems with it. Technology is not going to go away. It needs to be embraced. But the question is, who makes the decision on how it's embraced and how the services are delivered? For example, these iPads are virtually obsolete the day they came out. And we have a five-year lease that we're paying off of them. I think I voted against them, not because I'm against technology. I'm a very technology-oriented person. But I think it's a question of, we really have to have a state-of-the-art plan that's going to be able to blend technology in a successful way to integrate it into the curricula.
Okay. Thank you very much. Again, this is Frank Weber, and he's number four on your ballot. This is Mr. Ramon Polino, and he is number five on your ballot. Welcome, Ramon.
Welcome. Thank you.
How long have you lived in Olbridge? And do you have any children that are attending or have attended Olbridge Public Schools?
Actually, I'm probably one of the shortest seniorities on the list here because I've been in Olbridge about six years, going on seven years. I have two children in the public system. I have a son in a high school, and I have a son in Southwood Elementary. But I also have two nieces and a nephew, also in the public school system.
Okay. What motivated you to run for the Board of Ed? And what in your background qualifies you for this position?
Actually, I like that question because my wife asks me all the time. I came home one day to the tax bill. That was one of my initial introductions to the Board of Ed because I'm looking at my tax bill, and I'm wondering why I'm paying so much more to the school than I am to the municipality. So after, this was early on, and I was just learning about government, and I was getting more involved and finding out the roles and responsibilities. But that was a shell shock nonetheless. But then, having kids in the system, it kind of, and one of my sons especially, I have a little bit more hands-on experience with the teachers to certain needs. So it's a matter of being a part of the system and wanting to be there. It's hard to explain. I was raised with a sense of duty. My mother was a PTA president, and we stood on many picket lines. So I was raised in the school system. She had multiple jobs within the school, so it feels like home to me.
Okay. What do you see as the function of the Board of Education? And where do you feel you would have the greatest impact?
Well, a lot of people don't understand that the Board of Education, their role should be governance. The worst thing a Board can do is try to micromanage. And that's one thing I even learned as a manager myself, is you need to put the right people in place and then allow them to do their job. For instance, Cittadino, you put him in place and let him do his job, and then you provide the oversight. We monitor bills. We make sure there's no abuses. We take care of the needs at a higher level, but without interfering with the day-to-day operations.
Okay. This is a very big commitment with many meetings each month. If you're elected, how much time are you able to devote to the many issues facing our district?
I did research before I just jumped in the hat. And I saw, on average, and I've spoke to past board members, you're looking at anywhere from a commitment from 15 to maybe 50, 60 hours a month. And I weighed that against some of my other social and civic duties. I sit on multiple boards now. I'm also a volunteer firefighter here in the township. So I feel that I can meet the need. I wouldn't even put my name in the hat if I felt that I couldn't handle that responsibility. And I feel the role is just too important to not devote the time. Even today, I left work, I work in Piscataway, I left work because I felt the need, that this was important enough to do so. And when something's important, you make time for it.
Okay. What do you see is the most important issue facing Olbridge education right now?
Well, as a technologist and having kids in the system, I feel technology is the way of the future. Our kids are learning nowadays at a much higher rate than we are, and they need the right tools in order to do that. For instance, we had the iPad program, which, from speaking with various teachers and parents and students, it seems to be a flop. So we need to make sure that we are investing in technology properly. We are keeping up with state standards, but also exceeding them and being competitive with other scholastic environments. So we need to make sure that our technology meets not only the needs of the kids, meets the needs of the teachers, meets the needs of the parents. We can't have our parent portal going down. We can't have our teachers unable to respond to emails. I know some teachers that can't even make phone calls on some days. So technology is my passion, and it's something that is a big, big thorn in our district.
Okay. While there's always room for improvement, these elections often focus on negative. Please tell me something positive that's happening in Olbridge schools.
I'll tell you what. I can tell you firsthand, from coming into the district early, the special needs program has been simply amazing. I have my qualms with it. I'm not going to lie. I voiced it on multiple occasions, including one of the board meetings. But the special needs team is superior to most districts. And I've been in a couple of different districts. And seeing what they can do with very limited resources and, quite frankly, some questionable guidance, I throw myself behind them 100%. I think they're outstanding.
Okay. And my last question. Do you think we're up to date with technology? And if not, what are your suggestions to bring us up to date?
Obviously, that I am not in agreement with. We are nowhere near where we should or could be. I do realize we invested quite a bit of time and money into increasing what is called bandwidth. And for a technologist, it's common sense to me. But for someone who doesn't know, that's the amount of data that can be communicated between our buildings and between what they call the internet. Unfortunately, they put all that money there, but never cared to look at the infrastructure. So we have, we introduce all these new devices and technologies without worrying about whether or not our access points can even maintain them. And that's what we're experiencing now, where, I mean, you may not know, but you'll see, you'll hear reports of sluggish networks and no connectivity. That's that type of lack of foresight that they had when they introduced some of the technologies going on now, especially with the iPad program and with some of the workstations. So technology has a ways to go. And I think with my experience, I'll be able to give my professional opinion and a little bit of oversight onto what's already happening.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Again, this is Ramon Polino, and he is number five on your ballot. Thank you, Ramon.
Thank you.
We're here with George Gough, and he is number six on your ballot. Welcome, George.
Welcome. Thank you for having me.
How long have you lived in Olbridge? And do you have any children that are attending or have attended Olbridge Schools?
I've lived here for 17 years. My oldest son is Garrett. He goes to Sauk. And my daughter is Samantha, and she goes to Grissom. She's in the fourth grade.
What motivated you to run for the Board of Education? And what in your background qualifies you for this position?
Through the years, there have been many issues that you hear about, anywhere from the so-called concession stand to other issues, mostly financial issues. I worked on Wall Street for 19 years. I'm very proud to say that I got laid off in '07 due to the downsizing from the trading floor. And I live paycheck to paycheck. And I'm very proud to say we do a good job at it. And I want to bring that same approach to the Board, of living paycheck to paycheck.
Okay. What do you see as the function of the Board of Education? And where do you feel you'll have the greatest impact?
Well, the function for the Board of Education is to make sure the schools are run properly. We're not here to run the schools. We're here to make sure that the residents' tax dollars are spent wisely, and that all programs are funded properly, and they're truthful about the numbers that they give out.
Okay. This is a very big commitment, many meetings. If elected, how much time are you able to devote to the many issues facing our school district?
Yes. Actually, I have to thank my family for allowing me to run for the Board because I know for the next three years, it's going to take up a good portion of my family life that I really treasure so much. I'll be able to make all the, I'm sorry, I'm able to make all the meetings, all the events, and I'm really looking forward to producing for the Board.
Okay. What do you see as the most important issue facing Olbridge education right now?
The Olbridge education, we have pretty good test scores. We can always do better. Lots of parents have issues with the Common Core. I don't know if we can do anything about that. But also making sure that the certain projects and functions of the school are funded right.
Okay. While there's always room for improvement, these elections often focus on negative. Please discuss something positive that's happening in Olbridge public schools.
Okay. We have tremendous pride in Olbridge, regardless of what you feel about the football field. To see so many families come out there, to see the camaraderie and townspeople getting together for the sports. Our sports activities are really so important. I know it might be tough on certain families to commit such a time for that, but the Olbridge school system has really big pride. And that's a wonderful thing to see, that the kids are getting involved like that.
Okay. Last question. Do you think we're up to date with technology? And if not, what are your suggestions to bring us there?
Technology? I know we had some issues with the iPads that we had purchased and the technology platform that we use. Technology, when you buy a computer at home, it's good for the next year. And within that year, that technology is already obsolete. So you really have to have like a rolling ball and not spend too much money on one project because in three years, you're going to have to buy something new. The technology, the buildings, the infrastructure is getting older. We're going to have difficulty with that new technology moving forward to the future. So we definitely have to fund the facilities more for the future, for the future technology for the schools.
Okay. Thank you very much. And again, this is George Gough, and he's number six on your ballot. Thank you, George.
Thank you.
This concludes the interview portion of our program. Please stay tuned to cable channel 118 or Verizon Bios channel 24 for a brief bio statement from each candidate, followed by a question and answer forum. The questions were posed by Olbridge residents and taxpayers that have the same concerns as you. Please listen, and don't forget to cast your ballot on Election Day, Tuesday, November 4th, at your regular polling place. Thank you.